Okay.
All right, looks like we are live on Facebook. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is a special session of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, State of Arizona. It's being held on Wednesday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. And I'm calling the meeting to order at six P M. by Zoom. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Louis Pollak.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacchino.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Yeah.
Mayor Ken Budge. Councilmember Leslie Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff Ashley Coronado, City Clerk Joe Estes, City Attorney.
All right. Thank you, everyone that's joined us tonight. We won't be long at this place because at this point we're gonna move into executive session. I'll entertain a motion or I can make it, whatever.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Lou.
Oh, what compelling reasoning is taking us into executive session? Why can't we discuss this in public?
No particular reason. It was something I thought that you may want to if the majority says otherwise, we can hold this in open. I don't have a problem with that. I agendocized it that in that way so that you would feel free to whatever. So it's I'll take a position now and say we either can do it without. I was going to go into executive and then come back out and open up for discussion. But if you want to just move forward at this point, we can even just do away with the executive session. It's up to you as a council.
How about you? Do you have any compelling reason why we need to do this in executive session?
Well, if you're gonna be talking about a specific potential employee and he hasn't invoked his request that the discussion happen in an open session. If you're gonna have specific discussions with regard to that employee or potential employee. You know, those I would suggest you have in an executive session if you're gonna talk about certain specific issues. If you've got legal questions with regard to the proposed contract, that would be for executive session. But otherwise, no, the you know, the council's more than welcome to to have an open discussion with regard to this item in the regular meeting.
I thought if anybody had questions about the contract itself and where we were gonna go with that, then that's why it was executive. But if the majority of nobody has that indication.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I have questions about the contract. So in deference to you, I'll withdraw the question. We can go in executive session.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. So just to move forward, I will make the motion. I move to we we enter into executive session pursuant to A R S thirty-eight dash one three one point oh three A one and four for discussion and consultation with the city attorney in order to consider its position and instruct the city attorney regarding the city's position regarding the employment contract of Stephen J. Parkin as city manager. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to move into executive session. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Chair determines it's all ayes. We and so move, we will move into executive session. Thank you.
Everybody over there.
All righty. Okay. We are ready to go.
Thank you, everyone. So we come out of executive session. I'd like to make a motion that we come out of executive session and back to a special session. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion by myself and a second by Frank to come out of executive session. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Hary none. We're out of executive session, back into our special session. Our next agenda item is item number two. This is discussion and possible appointment of Stephen Parkin as city manager and approval of the city manager's contract. I I'm more than happy to open it up. I wanna welcome Mr. Parkin. I ask him to to join us so that questions or discussions for many council members that he would be here to join us on that. So I'll turn the floor over to whoever puts their hand up first if they would like to say something or discuss. Do I see any any hands? All right, I see Lou. Go ahead, Lou.
Mr. Parkin, as you know, I came onto the city council as you were leading your city manager's position and get an opportunity to work with you or to observe you as city manager. I have some concerns about the process we're going through right now because we have not advertised or interviewed candidates. We're pretty much opening it up to you because of your past experience and your contributions to the city, which I fully recognize and respect. However, I have seven questions I'd like to ask you to satisfy some of my curiosity about your qualifications and your opinions and attitudes about being city manager. So if that's acceptable to you, I'll move right into these questions.
Sure, go ahead, Lou.
Okay. Do you see yourself as a permanent city manager for an indefinite period of time? Or do you see this as you were in the past as a fill-in until we could select another candidate?
Well, to hello, everybody. By the way, it's good to be here. Yeah, I see my role this time a little bit differently than the last time. The last time we had a finite period of time and it was council's prerogative at that time to do two things. During my time there, one was to put the budget together and get it adopted. And the other one was to recruit a new city manager. That was not expressed to me this time. And quite frankly, you know, of course, all of my other jobs have been as a full-time, I hate to use the word permanent, but full-time city manager. And I didn't notice a significant difference in in I the the sense of non-permanence that went with the interim tag. I felt was a hindrance to our being able to do more over a longer period of time. As you know, I moved back here almost a year and a half ago now. And and so I've had a chance to observe. I've had a chance to vote for some of you. And I've had a chance to see how things are going and what projects are underway. You got a lot on your plate right now. And I don't think it would serve the best interests of our community to just put another interim person in here until we can find another city manager. As you know, you know, when I retired from my job at City Winslow, I was here for a while. We looked at real estate. We moved back. Okay, we live here because we choose to live in Bisbee. Okay, that's a commitment to a hometown at this point. It's not just because I happened to get a job here anymore. I could have moved anywhere after I retired. We chose to move here. So I'm gonna make the commitment until I'm too feeble to do so to deal with issues that you have presently and projects that you've got coming forward.
Okay, thank you for that. You touched on this just now, and I'd like to ask you, in your mind, what are the three top crisis problems facing the city of Bisbee today?
I believe that our biggest crisis has always been infrastructure. Okay. Heck, when I first started working here, I think it's fifteen years ago now. We had many of the same issues that we have today. Certainly, along the way, we've managed to fix some things. But while you're fixing something, it's the nature of a city. While you're fixing things, other things are wearing out. And so you know, I remember my last couple of days here during my first shift as city manager. Public Works had gotten another street paved and they were keeping track while I was here. We paved forty streets in Bisbee during my first shift here. Well, it seems like a lot till you realize there's two hundred and sixty streets in Bisbee and most of them are shot. And so it's a never-ending thing. The mountain moves, okay, the rain comes. You know, you're gonna have landslide issues you're gonna have. Wall issues, those are never gonna go away. And and even as I mentioned to the council when we were doing the budget two years ago, and I know it hasn't been done yet, we've got a ten-year-old runway out there that hasn't been touched since the day it was paved. Then these maintenance or we're gonna lose it too. So I see that as the biggest single thing. And it's probably one, two, and three. But we'll go number two. I feel I feel sick every time I drive by one eighteen Arizona Street. Okay, old city hall. Okay. Because we've had three or four years now to do something about it. And I know that everybody has a different idea what it's what it should be when we replace it. But I think we ought to make an honest effort to do it, realizing, of course, that absolutely nobody's gonna get what they want. Because we've got two million dollars set aside to work with, no more and no less. And so what we need to do is we need to get that done. And so, you know, that's the second thing. I mean, the third, there's probably sixteen third things, but one thing that is not maybe in the top three crises that I think we need to to discuss is Main Street. I know we spent a lot of money repaving Main Street in last year. I've been there myself personally and not for the purposes of inspection or to render any opinions or anything like that. But there are some areas on Main Street where I feel the curb height is too low to keep water from running over the curb. Before it was paved, there were places where people were putting sandbags up during during the monsoon. I think it looks it looks great, but I think we need to before monsoon hits. I think we need to reevaluate and and make some changes there that hopefully won't be overwhelming financially in order to protect property owners and business owners along Main Street. You know, it's it will not look good if we have a gusher. We didn't have a monsoon last year. So people didn't really know what damage could be done. I think we need we need to look at that now and and go forward. So there's three. Let me throw a fourth one at you. I'm gonna I'll put this out there right now. There's, you know, I I fully support what's been going on with trying to bring workforce housing to Bisbee. It has always been a problem. It has been a problem long before any of us. And I've been kind of watching. I've been watching your council meetings, not every single one, but as many as I'm home for. And, you know, I I think that if you look at what's going on with workforce housing, what you're doing, trying to do with the Hillcrest and some of the issues and and personnel issues that you need to deal with the design review board and with planning and zoning and and let's say, planning issues in particular, Lou. The the reality is is that several years ago, councils stripped the budget of community development. And we lost a community development director. We haven't had one since. I think that what what the city's trying to do right now with with the Hillcrest, the City Hall, the fire suppression system, covering planning, zoning, design review board, and workhouse workforce housing initiative. We we don't necessarily have to have a director, but we really need somebody full-time that's gonna be in charge of making sure all that stuff happens. Because there's a whole lot of other stuff for a city manager to do. And and I think paying particular attention to that by a professional who has expertise in that area will make a huge difference.
Okay, thank you. Could you share some ideas you might have about how you would balance the budget this year?
Well, I of course, I get my first look at next year's budget tomorrow morning, assuming that that you hire me. And I can imagine what it looks like without even seeing it because it kind of does the same thing every year. It comes in with way too many requests in it, and we have to make decisions on how to make it balance. The I took a look. In the last couple of days, I got the March thirty-first financial statements the other day, and I've had a chance in the last day or two to look over those. I, you know, and Lou, I know you and I have had private conversations with regard to some of the revenue aspects of particularly in the case of public safety. And I think I think moves that have been made to curtail some of the revenues that you were earning over many years have hurt you. And and by you, I mean the city of Bisbee. I don't I don't wanna point directly at you, Lou. And I and so I think we need to, if if we are not going to continue to provide those services, we have to look at the the human resources and the equipment and other resources that we already own that are going into that that, quite frankly, aren't generating the revenue that you used to generate. And so you know, that is something I think we need to discuss in some considerable detail during this budget session. And like I say, if I come to work tomorrow, I'm gonna Kerry's gonna be my first victim, and we're gonna go over the proposed budget and see what we're doing to deal with those issues. Because, you know, a good friend of mine told me once, you can't you can't control revenues, but you can control expenses. Well, we kind of can control revenues, and we've proven it with the with the ambulance bureau. So you know, like every year, some hard decisions will have to be made. But from what I've seen on the financial statements so far, it still isn't as bad as it was back in twenty oh nine and twenty ten. We had some real problems back in those days. And we survived that without raising revenues.
You hit on two of my questions with one answer. So thank you for that. City of Bisbee has ongoing grant-funded initiatives. I'm sure you're aware of some of them. Have you? Or how will you, as a city manager, deal with those initiatives that are ongoing? Police radios, for one example.
Well, of course, anything that's ongoing, I the first thing I need to do is get up to speed, get in the loop on those things. I'm going to presume, for the sake of argument, that any project of that magnitude, and there are several, the water system, for one, up in Old Bisbee. You know, that that's already been vetted. It's already been discussed by all of you. You've you've given your blessings to to move forward with those projects up to this point. You know, the as as we discuss frequently in the council manager form of government, the council sets the policy, the city manager implements. So all of the ongoing projects that you have approved and you have instructed the staff to move forward with, you know, that's what we're gonna do.
Last question. Do you have some ideas on how the city should deal with the sanitary sewer problem in Old Bisbee?
Well, I think that for over a hundred years, and this is the way we did it. I'm not saying it's right, wrong, or indifferent, but the way we did it when I worked here the first eight years is that in with residential outlets in particular, whenever two pipes come from a property and they meet, at that point, it's public sewer. And so whenever there was an issue with the line downstream of that point, that was taken care of by the city. I was a little surprised to hear that that opinion had changed at any point in time. Because, you know, the particular peculiar nature of Old Bisbee is such that when you build a city on a mountain, you're not gonna have, you know, nice straight pipes with nice ninety-degree connections like we do in other parts of the community, like where you live and where I live. It's gonna be a hodgepodge of a pipeline, and we have to recognize that. And you know, we never had any significant political issues with maintaining the sewer system using that philosophy. And like I said, I'm not saying it's right, wrong, or indifferent, but it worked. And, you know, until, I mean, you just, you, you know, if the terrain was flat, the world would be different. But we know we're not dealing with a with a with flat terrain.
Okay, thank you very much for taking the time and putting up with my
All good questions. All good questions. Thanks, Lou.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lou. This is what I I want a good, open, honest transparency, and I'm feel free. Who else wants a hand up? Joe, I see you're next. Thanks.
Hello, Mr. Parkin. Nice to see you again.
Yeah, good to see you too, Joe.
What do you think in your previous tenure as the city manager, what would you call your three top accomplishments?
Well, far and away, my my top accomplishment was keeping the city solvent during the worst recession since the Great Depression. And I think the 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 second accomplishment was getting Arizona Street done without being able to without having to use any real tax dollars involved in that because Arizona Street and and I know you remember what it used to look like. And we used to call it the world's largest series of potholes and and cold patch. So, you know, we were able to get a fairly large transportation enhancement grant, the program that was in existence at the time. But as everyone knows, you've gotta get you've gotta get match money. And during, you know, during that period of time, during every period of time, getting the match is always the problem. Well, we were we had a piece of land we sold over on Naco Highway over just south of where Alco is or Alco was. And it it sold for a pretty fair amount of money, six hundred thousand dollars. We took that money with council's blessing. And we used whatever part of that money we needed to pay for the engineering and pay for the city's city side of the match and get the street paved. So, you know, I'm gonna brag a little bit. I know people may have a different opinion of streets done since I left the first time and and say that it's a ten-year-old street now, and it's probably still the best best built and best maintained street in the entire city. So that plus, I think, if there's a third thing, along with dealing with the recession and dealing with financial issues and knowing, of course, that Bisbee has never, well, I shouldn't say never, because they did have a mine at one time. The in the last, you know, thirty or forty years since since the mines closed, this city has to, you know, has operated financially most of the time on a wing and a prayer. And we used to beg, borrow, and steal. And one of the one of the downsides to having a tight budget, having to beg, borrow, and steal to make things happen is that you can't always give your employees a raise every year. And and there were, in the eight years I was here, I think there were five of them where we didn't give anybody a raise. And that's hard. Okay. So what I, you know, what we tried to do is 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 we tried to, you know, keep the morale up so that when, you know, better times prevailed, that we could do it. And and we we put that first when we could. But I I think it's fair to say that when when I left the first time and when I left the second time, you know, the 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 city employees knew that they could work with a person in the city manager's position who cared about them, okay, cared about their families, cared about their jobs, and would always take the time to stop and talk and to hear what's going on from them in 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 their place, not in my place. I always spent a fair amount of time getting out to Public Works, police station, fire station, library, the pool. I even went up and visited Joni in the pool. And so, you know, those things are important to morale. They're important to the community. And I think that it's important for every city manager to make sure that, you know, they are thinking about everything they can to do what they need to do for the city employees. And now, did all ninety-eight employees love me? Yeah, probably not. But I felt I felt pretty good. Yeah, I mean, I felt pretty good when I had a I think I'd been here five or six years and I had a performance evaluation coming up. And there were some people that, and let's be honest about it, not everybody on council always liked me either. And without my even asking what I, well, first thing I did was I said, well, it's it's my prerogative to open that to the public. It doesn't have to be an executive session, just like we're doing now. And so and without any request on my part, I walked into that room for that performance evaluation, and every chair in the place was full, and almost all of them were city employees. So I feel fairly comfortable that I I know what employees need and what what we need to do to make sure that they maintain happy and productive and working part of our community. That's important to me, and I know it's important to you.
Since, you know, you were city manager for what, six, seven years?
Eight.
Eight years. And when you did leave, is it fair to say that you were ready to leave?
Well, I'll tell you what, I think that for a city manager, it's always a mixed emotion. Okay. I I will be totally blunt because I think you already know it. There were two people that got elected to to city office who did so with the intention of removing the city manager. Okay. Here's my philosophy. Okay. If I'm not welcome in your house, okay, I put my coat on and I go home. Okay, now, it took a little while because I, you know, the rest of council was was good enough to give me the time that I needed to shop around to see what was available. And 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 I'll tell you what, I think it ended up good for me and maybe good for you all, too. for you all too, because I went to work for the city of Winslow, I had a five-year run there, it was a great run, okay? Hardest job I ever had, okay? It is harder to work there than it is to work here, okay? Way more complicated in a lot of ways, and you're dealing with different types of constituency groups than what you're dealing with down here. And so, what you end up with is two things. Number one, a, a firm appreciation of every place else you've ever been. Number two, you, you learn some things new, okay? You learn how to do things, okay? You know, you, you've been doing the, the, the workforce initiative here, or workforce housing initiative, I'm sorry. In Winslow, it was urban renewal, okay? I mean, the stories about the small towns along Route sixty-six falling to pieces after I-40 went in, those are real stories, okay, about real places. And Winslow is one of those real places. We spent the five years I was there, we tore down forty structures, we revitalized the central, the, the core of the downtown area, we brought music, we brought performing arts, we brought art galleries, we brought restaurants into the core of the city, so you could do more than stand on a corner, get in your car, then go back on the road, okay? We were actually keeping people in town for whole days, and sometimes multiple days, and, and it showed on the tax revenues. So, whereas before, if there was an empty lot in downtown Winslow, the, the, the reason it existed was because of a fire. And half the downtown was burned out when I got there. So, you know, you learn something, and I think that having had that experience, and believe me, I love those people, okay? And I, I, I still converse with, I had, I was on the phone with somebody from Winslow just this afternoon, and, and I still get calls from the staff, and, and I get calls from the city manager, and it's, it's, it's a good relationship. So, yeah, things were, you know, I, I didn't feel totally welcome when I left Bisbee, but, you know, like I said, when I was talking, Lou, when we retired, we could, we could have gone anyplace in the United States, we came to Bisbee.
So, so why do you want to come back as city manager again?
Well, I, I think you're in a, you're in a position right now where you, you're, the budget is upon you. And I think that with, and, and as I was telling Lou, with all these other projects that you've got going, I think it would be a good idea to bring somebody who's had not just city manager experience, but budget experience, and I happen, I've done more budgets than anybody for the city of Bisbee, okay? It's, you know, Kerry here, Kerry here a few more years, she'll get, get ahead of me. But the, the reality is that, you know, I, 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 I felt that it was something that I should do for the purpose of making sure the city is well taken care of, because I'm, I've got a vested interest in this town, just like you do. And so, as, as long as I have something left in the system that can help, I'm happy to do it, and it'll be, and I have to admit, it, it'll probably be fun to do for a little while.
This next question, I'm just gonna be very blunt. I, I have heard rumors that you want to fire some people, and that concerns me. There's been so much turmoil. I think going in and firing people, you know, right off the bat, without, you know, looking at the lay of the land and how things are going, is not the right action, and I'd like to know your response to that.
Well, my, my blunt response to your blunt question is, I have no idea where that came from. That could not be further from the truth. That runs totally counter to everything I just told you about my experience working here in the past, and my reputation. And the, you know, in, in eight years of working for the city of Bisbee, on the first shift, we fired exactly two people. But what really happened was they fired themselves, we just told, we just gave them the news. And I wouldn't know who would want to be worried about getting fired. No city employee, everybody who's listening right now, nobody should be worried about being fired. Okay? Not saying, I'm, I'm not saying-
Hear it from the horse's mouth.
Yeah, well, you got the horses.
I, I'm not shy about asking questions that other people won't ask.
But I'm, I'm glad you asked the question, Joan, because it deserved the response.
Anything else, Joan?
Um, no. Okay. Thank you very much for answering my questions.
Okay, thank you, Joan.
And yes, thanks for your questions, I, all these are great. I'm gonna go move to Frank, Frank, go ahead.
Mr. Parkin, I don't think we've met, maybe passing over time, but it's been a while. Been interesting listening to you, I haven't known much of your history. I like some of the things you've been saying, and continuing with the workforce development project, the, the fire suppression work up here in Old Bisbee. And I'd just like to state that, as I have in the past, that in the last four years, we've had three city managers, and we've interviewed and hired and lost them. So, that process, even though this process is different, I know people like to stick with the same old thing, but that hasn't been working for us. And I think at this juncture, with the COVID, trying to do, you know, it's interviews and find somebody to come in and help us solve the problems at this time is, is not good. I think, I think firing Mr. Parkin at this point is, is a better, better solution, at least, at least for us for the time being.
Thank you, Frank.
Thanks, Frank. Leslie, hi, thanks, go ahead.
I get myself unmuted. Hi, Steve, it's good to see you. And, and I just wanted to thank you profusely for being willing to do this for us. I've liked everything you've had to say tonight, and I'm really excited to have you back.
Well, hopefully, what you've all been hearing is what you saw from my performance in the past, so.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you, Liz.
Anna, Joanie, anything?
I'm looking forward to working with him. I know his background, I've worked for him, and I had the opportunity to work with him as a councilperson. I know his experience, and I know his ability, and I think it's what the city needs right now. And I think he has the experience and the success behind him to, to hold up. Boom, that's it.
Thank you, Joanie.
There's only one more person that's spent more time with Steve than I have, that was Anna, so it's your turn, Anna.
I just want to say thank you for, you know, considering helping the city out. We did work together for a long time, and I appreciate your professionalism. I appreciate you tackling the hard issues, and I, I just, I mean, I look forward to this. I know you're coming in at a really rough time, but I know that you're up for the challenge. I, you know, I, you were just throwing some, some questions kind of out of the, out of the air here, and you answered them thoroughly, you gave examples, I really appreciate that. And you even answered the hearsay. And we know that, you know, there's a lot of that that floats around in Bisbee, but I like that you even tackled that head-on. I know that when, when you retired, you and Peggy could have gone anywhere, and yet you came home. And this is home, it's home to you, I know that it's home to Peggy, and we're just happy that you're back, but I really look forward to, to working with you again, and I, I thank you for considering this.
Thanks, Anna.
Thank you for that. I'm gonna take indulgent, indulge with me for just a couple of minutes. I know the process wasn't what we normally have done in the past, I know that's upsetting maybe to some, I, I kind of feel that honestly, what we need is what we need, and, and I did not want to see us out in the breeze, still looking months on end, and, and trying to find that perfect person, and, and so I appreciate Steve standing up and, and helping. And so, I guess my, my comment would be this, is, is I know that sometimes change is difficult. I mean, I've experienced it myself over the course of my seventy-odd years. I just want you, council members, and the public to know that as the elected mayor of Bisbee, I'll bend over backwards to include and encourage everyone to come together for the betterment of our town. This is your government, this is, this is the people's government. And I, I feel inclusion is key in what we do, and I want to reassure everyone that there's a seat at the table for you in this, in this decision-making process. That's the council, of course, that's, that's the public. This has not been an easy process, it's on me, but, but I want to say that I'm, I'm proud, and I'm actually at times humbled by the opportunity to be part of this council, and to work with our wonderful city employees, and to serve everyone that calls Bisbee their home, to make their quality of life the best that we possibly can. So I'm gonna steal a quote from something I truly believe in, and I heard, and I just, you know, it's going to be my new mantra, if you can say that, it says, "There's nothing we can't do when we do it together." So, that's where I'm at. And with that, I'll be proud to make a motion that I move that we appoint Steve Parkin as the city manager and approve the city manager contract as included in this, in this agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by myself and a second by Anna. Any more discussion? Joan, go ahead.
I can't in good conscience vote yes on this, simply because of everything that has happened, everything that has, the way this has come about, I don't feel like there's the transparency, I don't feel like this is, that the, the staff has had any input on this, and the city hasn't had any input on this. And, but Steve, I will work with you and to make sure that we can get this done.
All right.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just responding to Joan, Joan, I understand where you're coming from. I want you to know that I enjoyed our work together, especially on the budget. I thought you paid particular attention to the details on the budget, I was very pleased with your contribution to getting the budget passed two years ago, and I look forward to doing that again real soon.
Yeah, like a week from Monday, so anyway. If I don't see any other hands, I'm gonna call for, oh, okay, Lou, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I came in here tonight prepared to vote no on this because of the process argument that I've had from the beginning. However, Mr. Parkin equated himself well in answering all of the questions tonight, and I think it would be sour grapes on my part to vote no. So, I want you to know that I'm not ready to sing kumbaya with you, but I am ready to vote with you.
I appreciate that, Lou, and as I said, there's nothing we can do if we can't work together, there'll always be agreement to disagree, but, but we are here to serve our city, so. Any other hands? Ashley, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominno.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Nay.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, motion passes six to one. Welcome, Mr. Parkin, and may we all be blessed in the future, and all I can say is, this has been a, a process, and I know, and I appreciate everybody. So, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, I have a motion from Frank, a second from Leslie to adjourn. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All's nay. Chair Terwin's ayes have it, so moved, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and thank you.
Everybody, have a good night, and congratulations, Mr. Parkins, looking forward to working with you, and.
Yes, thank you, Joe.
But you're, you're a big part of us, so thanks, Joe.
All right, thank you, everybody, have a great night.
You too.
Night, night, night.
Good luck, Steve.
Thank you.